Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Mesa City Council session for May the 2nd. We're going to start without Councilmember Richens, but expect that he'll be joining us shortly, and we excuse Councilmembers Luna and Thompson, who will not be with us tonight. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. Council, we went over this last week. Currently, everything is on the consent agenda. Is there anything from staff that we ought to know about, about moving anything off the consent? Okay. Well, let's just take another pass through it to make sure that we're all comfortable. Item 3 are various liquor license applications. 4 are various purchase contracts. 5 are resolutions. 6 also are resolutions related to the city-owned utility rates. So those will be... A hearing will be conducted on May the 16th, so this is introduction of those. Item 7 are public hearings on various items. 8, also some zoning cases. And 9 is the adoption of some ordinances. Okay, hearing, no objection. Everything will remain on the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item number 2, to hear a presentation and provide direction on the City Council's strategic priorities, transforming neighborhoods, and the related departmental proposed budgets. Neil, good to have you. Looks like you brought a good group with you.
I did. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. With me today is, starting from my left, Ruth Giesi, Liz Morales, Eloy Garza, and then Paul Hawkins as well. Kind of a wide range of departments represented here. This kind of indicates a lot of the collaborative work that's being done on this priority area of transforming neighborhoods. So to get us started, this group, along with PD, we also have worked with economic development as well as environmental management and sustainability to kind of come up with this statement. This was where we started on how we are defining success, or how we are defining a transformed neighborhood, and that is a Mesa neighborhood that is clean, safe, diverse, and economically vibrant, where residents and businesses are engaged, informed, and take pride in their properties and community. So this really served as the starting point for us gathering a lot of data and information. And then from that statement came this map, which is an overlay of five different factors, again, tying back to that statement. So we looked at code violations and graffiti, which really ties into that clean part of that statement, looked at crime rates, which is the safe part, and then as well as the vacant properties, both commercial and residential, tying into that economically vibrant places. So what we did is took it all, looked at all of these, weighted them all equally, and then looked at areas of the city where they could use some assistance, or where there's some greater need in overcoming some of these factors. So as you can see here, the areas indicated in darker brown are where a combination of these factors occur at higher rates relative to other areas of the city, going all the way, kind of in that scale, all the way down to that really light yellow area where there are lower incidences of a factor of these, or a combination of these factors relative to other areas of the city. So you already heard a little bit about crime rates in the public safety presentation, as well as the vacant properties as part of the sustainable economy strategic priority area. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Paul to look at...
Mr. Richens has a question.
Quick question. Can you tell me how you're defining vacant properties? If it's vacant buildings, or is it empty lots? Or both?
It was both. For residential, I believe it was empty buildings, and then it's through CoStar, so that's the database that we used, which includes for the commercial, I believe, both, the empty lots as well as empty buildings. I think it's the period of time is six months or longer.
Okay. Thanks.
So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Paul, and we looked, like I said, we looked at each one of these a little in more detail. You've already seen a couple of them before, and I'll turn it over to Paul, who will go over some of his work specifically related to the code violations across the city.
All right. Thank you, Neil. So, Mayor and Council, the maps that you're going to see are related to our code violations within the city. This first map that you see is a density analysis. This map contains data regarding our code violations ranging from January of 2013 through January of 2016. It's roughly 35,000 cases reflected on that map. So the next step that we did after examining the density analysis was we broke those same number of code violations down by census block group. This next map shows you that there are roughly 314 census block groups in the city of Mesa. This map reflects the number of violations per census block group. Now, to get a better insight into some of the factors or correlations that there may be regarding our code violations, we decided to focus on, if we can see the next slide here, the block groups that fall within the top 10% of code complaints per housing unit. So looking at the top 10%, there's 314 block groups. It means we're essentially looking at the top 31 offending block groups within the city of Mesa. Statistically, roughly 1/3 of all code complaints occur within these top 31 block groups, and that equates to almost 12,000 violations. So what we did next was we began to overlay those maps with different demographic information. So this next map that you see is block group median age. Again, the top 10% block groups that we were examining are outlined in bold on that map. And you can see with a few outliers, generally the median age for those top 10% block groups was between 25 and 35 years old. The next demographic map that we overlaid was block group median income. Again, the top 10% are still bolded, and you can see, again, with a couple of outliers, generally the median income in those top 10% groups is between $30,000 and $44,000. The next map is percent housing units as rentals. The rental percentage is generally between 15 and 35%. The next map that we see is the median year structures were built. Again, this one shakes out generally as you would expect, going from west to east across the city, structures go from older to newer. Generally, in our top 10% offending block groups, the structures were built between, sometime between the 60s and 70s. The next map that you see is vacant housing unit percentage. Again, with an outlier or two, generally the vacancy percentage is generally between 5 and 10%. So we do get some information from these maps. This one in particular tells us that, unlike some communities, we're not dealing with a whole bunch of homes that people have just walked away from and are sitting empty. The next map that we see, at this point, we decided to expand. We wanted to see whether those correlations that we were seeing, or those trends that we were seeing with the top 10% of block groups, still held if we expanded that sample size to the top 25% of block groups. Without going through every one of those map overlays with you, again, the bottom line is that essentially when we expanded that sample size to the top 25%, we still saw the same trends as far as median age, vacancy, income, and those types of things. We didn't see a big shift in the map to different areas of the city. We really just saw the areas that we already saw struggling expanded as we expanded the sample size. So the next map, I'm not sure there is a next map. Nope. So with that, I will turn the time over to Eloy Garza, who's going to talk a little bit about code enforcement.
Mayor and Council, before Paul completes, Paul was on rotation here from Prosecutor's Department, so Paul's actually back now in the Prosecutor's office, but we appreciate the work he did. He spent a lot of time trying to help us understand trends and analysis in this very difficult area, and so I think if we will keep in mind a lot of what he said, we're just trying to profile a little bit, understand what's happening in these areas where we identified blight, and Neil gave you that definition. So where areas of blight were mostly related to crime, graffiti, code enforcement, I'm missing something.
Vacancies.
Vacancies. So this is trying to help us understand the issue. So now that we, with this information that we gathered with Paul, what Paul was able to pull together, now we're going to come to you in what we're next phase, you're going to hear us describe maybe two different approaches, some of which I think some of the committees have already talked about, increasing the outreach part, but talk about two different focuses, how we would address these neighborhoods and these areas where we see this challenge with blight. So, go ahead.
Mr. Brady, thank you. That's good segue, Mayor, Council. I do appreciate the work that Neil's done with the Transforming Neighborhoods Committee and the work that Paul's done. It's helped me tremendously. What it's basically has shown me that with the staff that I currently have, we're focused on the enforcement part of this. We're reactive instead of proactive, and I think this is where it's a good partnership with housing that gives us that outreach component for us to be able to go out and address some of the data that's been presented to you this evening. Helps us identify who those folks are who need the education and the understanding of what we're trying to accomplish within the city of Mesa. With that data, as you can see from this slide here, it will show you that over the last three years and then year-to-date, we're consistently between 77 and 80% compliance rate. The next slide will show you those numbers and, or those statistics in raw numbers, which basically shows you the number of cases. As you can see, we're increasing in the number of violations that we have a year. The notice of violations is the point right when we're going to get to a citation. Our goal is to not cite. Our goal is to abate the issue before it gets to a citation, but as you can see, there is a statistic that is consistent with the previous slide that shows we are going out and we are citing, and unfortunately, that number is also increasing because we have folks, again, that I believe are not educated on our process, which is something that we need to kind of strive to, to help folks understand. The next slide is showing the process, basically our current process, where we're at right now. As you may know, best-case scenario is 35 days. Again, that's following our current process where we send a courtesy notice, we do an inspection, we basically go out and then send a notice of violation, do another inspection, send some type of other notification, and continue on there. If we followed that to the T, we would be at 35 days. Unfortunately, that's not the case. We're usually at 120 days plus, which is about that four-month mark. One of the things that, again, this data's helped me to analyze and look at is how to streamline that process. We will be changing the process, which will give us a better scenario and outcome in addressing these issues a lot sooner than we currently are. And this is where the partnership comes in, where they'll help us on that educational piece and be proactive.
Thank you, Eloy. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I want to talk about the key strategies on how we're going to address the outreach and education approach of this, to be able to transform our neighborhoods. The goal is to achieve visible improvement in appearance, informed, having informed residents, and overall improved perception of anyone who would enter the neighborhood that we work in. We have a multifaceted approach utilizing Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal funding source, which I will be referring to as CDBG. The funding will support the following program components: significant housing rehabilitation, the Love Your Block Assistance Programs, minor housing rehabilitation, and educating in maintaining the exterior of the homes, grants to improve the exterior of small businesses, and existing city resources, which are non-federal funds but can be used to expand and leverage what we're doing with the federal funds. The first component of the program is called Educate and Beautify Neighborhoods. It's an eligible activity under the federal program of CDBG that has proven success in other communities in serving targeted areas of low to moderate-income households. We have decided to fund an external agency or company to collaborate and work closely with the city. We will seek an external partner through a request for proposal process, and we will select a partner that has experience in housing rehabilitation and the ability to connect and educate residents. The selected RFP partner will have a program delivery. The program delivery will encompass the minor exterior rehab assistance, education on home maintenance and energy conservation, and also informing on city resources and how to access those city resources. We estimate of serving up to 50 homes based on the funding that's available. The RFP partner will also work with local businesses that may need financial assistance to improve the exterior appearance that can enhance and complement the work that's being done in the residential neighborhood. We hope to serve one or two businesses with this funding. And finally, we are in process of...
Excuse me, Liz. Mr. Richens has a question. Real quick, just, so I see we use the term "up to 50 homes," and a part of the vision was to look at some blighted multifamily, could be duplexes, triplexes, apartment complexes. Are they part of the radar screen for this, maybe, or how does that play into this?
Mayor, Councilman Richens, I will tell you that we are looking primarily at single-family residential. Not that they might not have some multifamily in there, but because of the funding and what the programs that we're proposing, it does not fit as well with the multifamily.
So I guess I don't completely understand that response. So say that you have, I can think of sections that have a lot of fourplexes, and they're, it's bad. How do we address that issue under this program?
I will tell you, under this program, because they do, are dispersed, as you know, through the community, so we will have some of those in the neighborhoods we target. We're going to work closely with code enforcement to help identify what those issues are through some of the work that we'll do with Love Your Block. We'll help do some neighborhood projects that could include those fourplexes, and then we'll utilize what other city resources we have, which we'll go through some more through the presentation. But we will be discussing more on what we do with rental properties.
So Liz, but isn't the answer to Councilman Richens, is part of our approach here is to work with code compliance, work with the work, work with the information that Paul's provided, and create a targeted impact area? So we probably, whatever's there, it needs to be addressed, we would address it. I guess that's my answer is, once we identify an area that shows that's got chronic code issue, blight issues, and we go in there both with enforcement and outreach, as far as I'm concerned, it's whatever, the data's telling us there's a concern, there's a problem in this geographic area, we're going to put the resources to address it, whatever is there.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Not trying to exclude any type of use. There may be some restrictions, but we, as a community, as the program, looking at this, have to say, where is the, you know, the hotspots on the map and say, how do we go in there together with enforcement and outreach and go make a difference?
Right. So I mean, that's what drives our decision. I look at the blight maps that you showed earlier.
Right, that's what I...
And, you know, I don't want to leave a tooth with a cavity in it.
Very good. And I think that's fair, and I think we would come to council and talk about how do we address that concentrated area, and if we need to adjust some funding, but I think my folk, the focus we've talked about is that specific area, not having gaps inside of there. So we will work with that.
Good. Good, thank you.
Well, help me understand that, because presumably some of the multifamily properties would be investor-owned, and if we approached this on a needs-based approach, where we're sitting, I suspect a lot of the single-family homes, if we were to evaluate the income levels of the folks that owned and occupied those homes, that would clearly qualify probably for anyone's, be below the bar for most people's threshold for providing public assistance.
Yes.
Some of the multifamily properties are owned by investors, and they might just be bad landlords. They might be slum lords. They might be people who have the resources to make the improvements, they're just refusing to do that, and maybe more of an enforcement approach would be appropriate.
Right, man, that's why we've kind of, we purposely set these two groups side by side, trying to find a way to leverage both of these going into an area. So if, if the carrot and the, you know, encouragement and outreach isn't working, then Eloy carries around a nice stick that he can go around and try that encouragement. So that's the guide, the idea is to not, and these, both these groups have worked hard in neighborhoods. We're really seeing this opportunity to use the data to really direct them, pull them together, to go address these, and our hope is that by combining these resources in a focused area together, we're looking for better outcomes. And we may have to go back to council and say, maybe large multifamily is a different story, investors, and maybe we need to come back with other tools to approach that, but we will know better about that when we get to that point.
Yeah, and I know, I've seen the presentation, but the one piece that I saw missing out of that was some enforcement around the TriStar program, the crime-free multi-housing that, I didn't see a focus area including PD with TriStar, because I think that would really help fill that gap.
And I appreciate that, Councilman Richens. I will say that the focus on this Educate and Beautify is the financial assistance that we can provide with CDBG funds. So the next slide is the Love Your Block Small Project Assistance, which I referenced earlier. It has been operated with other funding sources in the past by our Neighborhood Outreach with much success. As a result, we are incorporating this component in the pilot, and these funds will be used through an application by a neighborhood group who identify a project for the whole neighborhood. The group won't be funded directly. Instead, the city will be operating those funds, and it'll be very user-friendly. We can stretch resources where neighborhood groups can't. As an example, if you go to Walmart, you buy a paintbrush, it's $7. We can buy it for 75 cents through our bulk procurement of our vendors that we have. So we can, we can stretch resources, we can do a lot more with the funding so that we can do more neighborhood projects. It also works well in conjunction with Neighborhood Outreach's other complementary programs like the tool lending, the paint reuse, and volunteer network. The Small Project Assistance will focus in target areas, but is anticipated that other eligible CDBG areas can also be served utilizing these funds. So an important question is, has been, which neighborhood will get these funds? How are we going to select the neighborhood? And we want to be strategic, of course, with this funding, and we want to consider the factors that we've talked about. One, it does need to be a CDBG area because of the CDBG funding that we will be using, but as Paul presented, all our decisions are going to be driven by data, and City Manager also indicated that. We want to focus on a neighborhood that has potential for visible improvement once we do this, this project. We want neighborhoods in transition from that. They weren't so bad maybe a few years ago, but we're really seeing some changes towards the blight or some challenging issues where homeowners can't keep up with the maintenance. And we want, as I said it, stated earlier, we do want it to be primarily single-family, even though there will be some multi-housing and some businesses in the area, that is our focus. And we also want to look at an area that maybe hadn't received a lot of resources through other building-strong neighborhood programs and other things that we have done in the past. Our target neighborhood will be somewhere between 200 to 500 homes, and we're going to be coordinating with What Works Cities Work Group as we pull all the factors together, which has multiple city departments to discuss other impacts to consider with the selected target areas.
Mr. Richens, do you have a question?
So could you flip back to some of the maps?
Sure. Which one do you want to see?
Just any one that showed your top 10. That's how you select your neighborhood.
Yes.
That's, that's what we're doing. Yeah, so you're going to prioritize based on some of these...
On her slide, she just listed them by, yes, that's exactly.
It wasn't quite clear in what she said.
No, no. So she referenced what Paul had done.
Yeah.
And so we're using that to help drive the locations.
Okay.
Yeah. And, Mayor and Council, we will look for, so I think Liz is saying, you know, CDBG funds may be only restricted to allow us to use for these types of programs or activities inside those areas. We'll try to leverage what other departments might have, whether it's PD or other areas that, if we need to address some other factors inside that neighborhood. We've had discussions about, not job training, education. We walk into a neighborhood and there, we find out there's individuals, disadvantaged youth who've dropped out of high school, or adults who are looking for more learning opportunities. We need to go in there with everything and see what we can do as, all the resources of the city to assist.
So you're like seeing Mesa Council on College and all those kinds of things are playing into it.
Exactly. We've talked about how do we bring all those together.
So, again, on the selection, our intention is to get those fact, review those factors, bring that back to you, Council, so that we can identify what those top neighborhoods are, so that we can do a final selection. But that, these are the factors that we will be bringing to the table. So, in the last presentation that I did on CDBG funding recommendations, some changes were made to increase funding to this pilot, which affected the number of code enforcement officers. This first slide talks about what our current funding is for code enforcement. With general funds, we, the city funds seven officers for a budget of $764,000, almost $765,000, and with CDBG funds, we fund two officers and a temp employee for $217,000, for a total of 10 officers. What was proposed in the budget proposals was to increase that by two officers in the general fund, so a total of nine officers for a budget of $957,000, and continuing to fund two officers and a temp with CDBG funds for $217,000, and this pilot, the Outreach and Education pilot, for $200,000. From the last meeting, we, it was revised to move the funding for CDBG code enforcement officers to fund the, to increase the funding for the pilot, but that, what that caused is for the reversion of, instead of 12 officers, back down to 10 for a budget of general funds for code enforcement of $787,317.
Excuse me, Liz, we have a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you. I mean, I recall our committee discussions on this, but I'm not sure really was the committee's intent was to eliminate those additional positions, and quite frankly, from my viewpoint, I mean, in terms of the council revised recommendations, I would add either two or three additional code officers on using general fund money for the resources that I think you will actually need to more effectively take care of these programs. I think many of us have, have heard this. I know the mayor has talked about this, Councilmember Glover, Councilwoman Richens, so I think let's take a, let's take a hard look at that, because we do know that, that there is, there are some funding needs that can be funded that don't necessarily or detrimentally affect our reserve policies. So that's just where I'm coming from, but I, I think those of us on the committee thought that the need is there for the additional personnel. Our big concern was not having their jurisdiction limited by the CDBG funding areas, and that it was more appropriate to move it to general fund and then take those, the CDBG funds for, again, the, for the outreach, unless I'm missing something from our meeting.
Well, yeah, as I know, as I, as I recall, that it was not that way, but it was that we wanted to put the code officers in the general fund, that, that we wanted to use the extra money for the outreach piece instead of the enforcement piece, because what I'm concerned about is if you have too many code officers, then, and you don't have enough funded in the outreach piece, then they're out of balance. You have a lot of enforcement going on, but you don't have enough resources and outreach to keep up, and I thought that this balance that we, you know, at least our committee in Community and Cultural Affairs preferred the numbers that you see on Slide 23 for that very reason, is that we, we wanted to try in a pilot that, you know, you could have a lot of code officers going around doing a lot of enforcement, but we felt the issue really was that we didn't have the education piece going out to the community to react to it. So you see on the earlier slides how much citations and, you know, that kind of piece that we're doing, when I think you're going to quickly see a decrease in the need for code compliance officers if you're fixing the blight issue in a holistic balance, which is what I thought Councilmember Glover kind of alluded to in, in some of the papers that he put together. But I thought this was the right balance on what you had on Slide 23, and that, you know, there's so many pressures on the general fund that I would recommend that we go with this number this year, and then obviously other, the next council next year will have to look to see if that balance was appropriate or not, because we're in a pilot phase, and I'd really like to see that outreach piece higher than the enforcement piece, for at least this first round. So, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Glover.
I have a question for Mr. Garza. Eloy, do you feel that you have the employees right now, full-time employees, necessary to at least fulfill the job that's asked of you currently?
As I made the statement in the very beginning, I think we're kind of reactive instead of proactive with the current number that I have. The, the officers, if, if it maintains at 10 total, whether they're in CDBG or not, I'm just maintaining.
Okay.
Let me say, fine work done, lots of challenges, it's a tough job to do. I would hope you would have... I would hope you would evaluate when you talk about how many officers and the workload and others. I've seen in District 2, and again, I don't want anybody to take away that I'm being critical of folks, but seems to be a management policy or something that says, okay, I've been called out for an RV that's in front of the fence. And then somehow, individuals have said, well, since I'm here, I'm going to look around and see if I see any more in an area, and then begin citing folks. I would say, if you're hearing from the council, if I'm hearing, we want blight. We want the most difficult situations taken care of first, and then not to generate. So, I know you're saying, hey, we don't do anything unless we're called, but I have heard of a policy, and I've been chewed out a lot recently about, well, I was called out for this particular one, and I'm looking across the street, and I see a similar code violation, so I'm going to go over and cite those folks, too. I would suggest that probably ought not to do that until we've really taken care of the blight in the area. And that may help for workloads, may help to save me some chewing outs. And then, again, the height of the fence, some of those things that probably aren't blight-related. And again, I don't... We have wonderful people doing good work. I just think that from a management side that we could really prioritize to blight and to other areas. If we get those solved, we'll worry about those fence heights later and then get through it.
Mr. Richens.
I mean, isn't that how you would address blight, though? I mean, wouldn't you stand there and look around and say, oh, like, look, hey, here's one issue here, and gosh, the neighbor across the street has a big issue? And I think maybe what we need to get down to is a narrow definition of what blight is. Is it a boat in front of a fence or an RV in front of a fence? Or is it a height of a fence? Or is it a, you know, an awning that somebody tacked to the side of their house? Or is it, you know, unpainted home, you know, stuff falling off, unkept yard, you know, which is it? So, I think maybe if the council did some work on narrowing the definition, it would help, you know, the focus a little bit. I mean, we have what's written statute.
To Councilmember Finter's point, I think what we would say is this. Where that technique may be most useful is when we're focused in these blighted areas. Because what we would hope to be able to do is maybe not necessarily now where you have a code officer who would go out and enforce after they see that violation on their own. But now, instead, we do... We go over and we educate, and we do an outreach. We're not doing this... We're trying to balance because it's apparent, if you heard the numbers from Paul, and while enforcement is important, and we get it, frankly, the... And I appreciate the council trying to create flexibility, but if you look where the challenges are, we could spend all this money in CDBG, and we'd still be going after those areas. And we got to create a balance, I get that, and have some flexibility. But by doing that, and then approaching this not just from an enforcement standpoint in those areas, and maybe code officer gets a complaint, goes out there, but if he sees an area that's got a variety of concerns, not just the one he got the call on, maybe it's not for him to go and start putting citations on all those homes, but now saying, this area needs some help. We need to do some education. We need to do some outreach. Maybe the neighbors need some ideas about what kind of improvements they can be, and we... Maybe we can provide some funding, especially in the single-family homes, to help out with that.
Well, and maybe even the... And if I can follow up, Mayor, if that's okay. Bradley Estates, this is where I had this event happen. And Bradley Estates, one of the finest executive-level home areas. I know folks that live in that that are here. But versus Lynn Ray Square Homes that are at Lindsay, very challenged county island that was brought in decades ago. Oh, so many challenges, so many crime problems. I would say the education and enhancement portion would be a great time to go, hey, we got a call on this one. Let's educate these other folks to what the possibilities are. But the true code enforcement going to write you up, and, you know, the more severe kind would be reserved for more of that CDBG along Main Street.
Well, it's going after the... What was it, the 20... Or whatever number represents disproportionate number of calls for service? What's that number, Paul? The number of kind of recurring violations is a small percentage, but they result in a large amount of the violations. Do you remember what that number is?
I don't. I love to tell you.
But it's a small number of recurring locations are creating a large disproportionate amount of the work. That's probably the easiest way to say it. So, what does that tell us? Well, maybe that's where we need to go spend our time and try and figure out, because if we can solve some of those recurring habitual offenders, then we're going to be able to free up a lot more of our code enforcement time, too.
It's a little bit like the convenience store approach.
Right. Well, and matter of fact, what's great about Eloy's, it comes from the police department. This is the same conversation we were having last week with Public Safety about, you know, the idea of being more proactive and trying to get ahead of it and trying to address the community's questions and concerns as opposed to just doing enforcement.
Mr. Cavanaugh, Mr. Glover.
Yeah, I agree. I'd echo Mr. Brady's comments. I think it's the same philosophy that we've been looking at in Public Safety, where, you know, where in the police department, been really focusing on the individuals who've been causing most crimes in the city. And the department's allocated its resources towards that, which is one of the reasons we've seen, I believe, a dramatic decrease in crimes in the community. I get calls from people who say, you know, what, does the code compliance officer have blinders on? When they're coming out responding to a complaint that is made, and they don't take any account or don't do anything about all the other violations that are on the same street. And maybe it's not a situation of going out and doing warnings or notifications immediately that take account of that and bring it back, and have that as part of the data that the office is evaluating. And maybe, as Mr. Brady said, that's an area that's going to need some education and outreach rather than, you know, just, you know, walking down the street, house after house. Because I have a very... I have a hard time responding to constituents saying, you came and sighted me from my boat in my front yard, and there was another boat in the yard across the street from me, and you didn't do anything about it. And so... And there's no answer to that, really. And so... But I think it's that the officers should be aware of it, and we should be able to work on collecting that data for that street or that neighborhood that we use to help focus the education and outreach efforts to hopefully minimize the need for citations in the future.
If permission's granted, I can comment on what you stated. Basically, it's not a management policy. One of the things that I ask my code officers to do along those lines is if there's a violation at a particular residence, I ask them to do what I would refer to as a 360. And they basically drive around that block to look for similar violations so that it's fair if someone has a boat or a trailer or other code violation, we do send them a notice. So, it's not a citation. I think a lot of times, the courtesy notice is misconstrued as a citation. As you saw by the data, 80%, pretty close to 80% of our people comply. So, it is the habitual and repeat offenders who are receiving citations, not your, you know, dad who decided over the weekend to pull the trailer together for the kids to go camping.
Mr. Glover.
No. I definitely feel like the holistic approach, and that the way that Councilmember Richens crafted this in the Culture and Community Development Committee is a very good starting point. I know that Councilmember Richens also feels like outreach is very important, as do I. I think that focusing on these areas that are most blighted and that have the most problem areas, those are the neighborhoods that we should target. And along with Councilmember Finter, focusing on how do we define that blight? What is most serious in nature versus what do we need to go after? I want to put this out to my fellow colleagues. I'm like, I've always felt that code compliance also needs a little bit more teeth at times. It's not having like carrot versus the stick, but I would be in favor of moving it over to the police department where it was originally, just because I feel that the people would give it more credibility, and probably it could help expedite the process as well. And even if you go into the habitual offender or the criminal citation as well.
Just kind of tag on to... I mean, part of it is the wording of the courtesy notice. It's very formal. It's very... I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can word a courtesy notice to get somebody's attention. And, you know, if you haven't noticed, ADOT has been experimenting with the way it does the freeway notices. And they've been... They've made a Star Wars reference in one of their things, and it caught on, you know, viral around the country. Everybody's, look at this. You know, sometimes just saying, hey, did you know that having your boat parked in front of the house is not okay? Or not, you know? You know, and it's... Sometimes it's just a different approaches, and I think it's part of this. I'm hoping that we kind of rethink that just a little bit. And I know the lawyers are getting nervous, and Jim's sitting up, and he's, oh, my gosh, we have to have certain ARS citations in it, you know, or it's not good enough. I mean, I think of the letter I get from Mesa Public Schools when my kids have too many absences, and it's like they're going to send in the troops and drag my kids to school. And it's offensive. And public schools, oh, well, they hide behind some state law. So, I was like, okay, fine, we don't have to hide behind that law, I don't think. So, that may be part of what we should rethink here.
How are you guys doing on your presentation? Are you...
Okay.
We've got a few more minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me just go to the next slide. Yes. So, I just want to just do one last overview of the funding sources that would be going into this pilot. We have the $200,000 that was originally proposed out of CDBG funds, $217,000 that was previously funding the code enforcement. We have the rehab program, which is a $650,000 program, but we are dedicating up to $325,000 to prioritize those residents in those targeted areas. And then, we will be using admin funds from our community services to help support administrative activities. And now, Ruth Giese, my supervisor and director of community services, is going to talk about additional transforming neighborhood activities.
So, just to restate the obvious, I guess, we take all of these numbers and add them together for the total budget for this program, correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, Ruth. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Good afternoon. I will go through the rest of the slides pretty quickly so that we can move on to your council meeting. We did want to also talk about the additional resources that will be provided to the target area in the pilot program. We will be working. It's a multi-department approach. Again, we will look into the TriStar program with police, our Clean Sweep, Green Sweep program. We plan to conduct renters' education workshops to help from that end so that renters might be able to find ways to actually buy a home rather than continue renting. We will continue to use the efforts that we have so that we can make this pilot program successful. The plan that we will be doing is we will be coming back to you with our proposed target area, also with our proposed RFP to send out. We will implement and measure the results over the year. And then, based on those results, we may be back here in a year to talk about how we can add it into our 1718 budget.
Mr. Richens. I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. Some of our existing community services programs that we are doing currently includes our Building Strong Neighborhoods initiative. Since January of 2006 through January of 2016, we have been to 58 neighborhoods. We have engaged over 19,000 households. We've really been able to identify the issues of that particular neighborhood with a great survey, and we get 30% back, which is excellent. So, we really know what the neighbors want. We have collected over 3,000 tons of debris through our Clean Sweep program. And of the cases that were open during the BSN, 80% were closed by the time we ended the BSN. So, that's excellent.
Just summarize the next few slides. I don't know if you have to cover it. Just summarize the next few slides.
Okay. Thank you. And the existing home programs, we will continue to use those and assist the pilot with the existing housing programs that we have. And then, of course, we were able to use our 1415 impact of the Love Your Block program to take those successes and use them with the pilot. Our budget for community services is on our last slide. Most of the funding comes from federal funds, and then we have a small general fund under Housing and Community Development. And then, both our Neighborhood Outreach and our Animal Control are funded with general fund. And that is it.
Thank you very much. I know we're... The time is far spent, but can I just say, I love this approach. I mean, I think this is a great example of the What Works Cities approach to setting strategic priorities and about evaluating a situation in our community and using data to shine light on it and to use it to make and help us make informed decisions. So, kudos to staff for taking this data-driven approach to this. I thought it was great. A couple of... I don't know the answer to this question, what's the sweet spot with regard to the number of code enforcement officers versus blight abatement? And I obviously... I do get the fact that more blight abatement will hopefully reduce the need for more code enforcement. So, I just don't know. And maybe we need to give it a year or so to do this experiment, and then it will... The answer will manifest itself. But a quick question. I took the numbers, the 200,000, the 217, the 325, I added them together. I came up with $742,000, $38,000. How much did we spend last year? Because I'm wondering if we take that amount of money, which is not a small amount of money, and particularly if we spend it in a targeted area to increase the impact, is that what we're proposing to do?
Yes.
Okay. And how much did we spend last year on this effort, if any?
Well, again, this is a... Mayor, this is a new approach. What we've done in the past is we funded... Out of this funding, we funded two code enforcement officers and one temporary. We did homeowner rehabilitation. So, we've done activities with these funds. What we're seeing is new funds is about 217,000. I mean, I'm sorry, 417 is really brand-new funds to do this effort. Everything else is channeling some existing resources of things we've been doing already.
Okay. Well, it's an interesting idea. I thought it's... I think I support it, but it's a new idea that I need to wrap my brain around a little bit. One other question, the notices that we're sending out, are they in Spanish also?
Currently, they are. We corrected that, identified that they originally were not.
I think that was one of the things, again, we noticed by kind of taking a data-driven approach to this, and we noticed where the chronic problems were, and we overlaid where the Spanish-speaking neighborhoods were, and we noticed that we were sending out notices that maybe weren't bilingual. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Yeah. So, that's another great example of using data to improve the system. So, thank you for doing that. Council, any other questions or concerns for this presentation? Thank you. Great presentation. The next item on our agenda is Item 3, to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Cavanaugh.
Thank you. I'd just like to give a brief report back to the council. On our District 3 event Saturday at the Rhodes Aquatic Complex, I want to thank Mesa Parks Recreation staff for working with us in that facility, Mesa Police, Mesa Fire and Medical. We had a... It was a fundraiser for the 100 Club of Arizona, and I'm having to report that the combined Mesa Police and Fire teams actually retained their surfing championship title against Chandler. Very spirited competition. Actually, we had several hundred people attend the event over the three hours there, and I think we raised... The final number will be about just under $2,000 for 100 Club. But again, it was a very well-attended event. I thank everyone who made it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanaugh. Mr. Richens.
Last week, attended the, what's called the Hanover Industrial Fair in Hanover, Germany with GPEC and some of our folks from our Mesa Economic Development, Bill Jepginiac, and the Arizona Technology Council was there, Arizona State, ASC, and U of A were all there. While we were there, we met directly with a little over 40 different businesses that had interest in doing business in Arizona and Mesa also. This fair was absolutely mind-blowing of its size. It was on a fairgrounds that was about a square mile, so if you think of our whole downtown, this thing fits within that. It had three bus lines that served all of the different buildings, and it restores your faith in humanity of the creativity of man and woman and what they can accomplish, putting stuff together from robotics to building tiny... The tiniest of little parts. What was neat is the focus was doing business in America, in the United States. So, we just... There were several states represented by booths. I think it was a really successful trip. Looking forward to some of the follow-up that's being planned already for that. Want to compliment GPEC for the work that they did in advance with our Economic Development team to really get some focused meetings for Mesa, to look at some of our supply chain opportunities with Boeing and Apple and the different businesses that are already here. So, it was a really neat trip and really eye-opening, and hopefully it'll bring some high school highway jobs back to Mesa. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for making that trip. We'll look for good things.
Such a sacrifice.
Well, it probably was, actually. So, thank you. Any other... I noticed a few of us have green ribbons on today. We... Several of us were at the Mark Center earlier today, celebrating Mental Health Month. celebrating Mental Health Month during the month of May. So I was happy to give them a proclamation, and we'll look forward to opportunities throughout the month of May to send out the message that we're working on improving mental health services in the city. Next item on our agenda is scheduling of meetings and general information. Chris?
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder, our study session will be this Thursday, May 5, at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes the items on our agenda. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.